Call this meeting to order, the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors for April 5th, 2022. We'll call Mr. Peter.
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Belka?
Here.
Wright?
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received its proposers amended?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Public comment? Anybody from the public like to comment anything other than what's on the agenda? Seeing none here, anybody online? Hearing none, moving on to claims and payments. Mr. Perry?
This week's expenditures totaled $97,547.86. Sheriff's Department is $12,580. Secondary Roads, $13,836. And finally, Health Department, $13,281. Everything is normal.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Belka?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is received project updates from department heads and elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. I just wanted to let you know we will be holding a public meeting on May 5th at 6:00 PM at the Dunkerton Public Library to discuss the removal of the East Bunnington Road Bridge. I think I've been telling you about this for a few years now. The road and the bridge have been closed for several years now. It's time that we have our public meeting and I am proposing that we remove it. We will be sending out letters to the adjoining property owners within probably a five-mile radius and we'll be letting you know as well. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Kathy, we've had previous meetings on there, haven't we?
We did. We had a meeting before COVID and then it was suggested by one of the board members that we hold another public meeting as we get closer to the time of actually removing it. So, we would like to remove it this fiscal, in FY '23 for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Caitlin Emmerich, Deputy Director at Black Hawk County Health. Just have a brief COVID update for you. We are still at the low COVID-19 community level here in Black Hawk County and vaccination rates are pretty steady with 71.6% of our Black Hawk County residents aged 12 and older receiving at least one dose. The biggest update since the last time you've been updated is that on March 29th, the CDC updated guidance for some individuals to receive a second booster dose. That includes individuals 50 and older that received their booster at least four months ago, individuals 12 and older that are moderately or severely immunocompromised that received their last boost four months ago, and individuals 18 and older that have had the primary and secondary Johnson &amp; Johnson or Janssen vaccination. That's all I have for you at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Morning, Yolando.
Morning, Board. Yolando Lovelace, Black Hawk County Veterans Affairs Director. I just wanted to take a few minutes and show a couple slides, if I can get that go. You know, it had meaning today when we did the Pledge of Allegiance based off of what's actually going on in the world today in that standpoint. It's sad what we see on the national news, but I'm thankful and can we put that in? But I'm thankful for the men and women who have served this country well. So, real quick, I'm just going to show a couple slides. I won't be long. But this month, April, is the month of the military child. We sometimes forget about the child. We sometimes forget about the widow. In particular, the child is something important because mom and dad is normally gone. In my case, it was that way. Both me and my wife are deployed. I've probably spent, my daughter's 31 years right now as of today, but while she grew up, I probably spent maybe seven years of her life while I was deployed and my wife was deployed. And so, we sometimes forget about the children and the effects that we have on our children. Today, though, I just kind of want to catch you off guard, but my hidden hero of this month is, of course, Supervisor Dan Trucca, a Marine, a Marines Marine, so say. When you look at it, he was part of the FBI National Academy. That's something that I didn't know. This guy is a celebrated police officer. When we talk about, he was the Chief of Police right here in Waterloo. And what's unique is, he's been married 35 years, 12 children, only have one. So, you could teach me a few things. With five biological and seven adopted. And then he has 14 grandchildren. Again, you could teach me something about that too in that standpoint. But again, just wanted to celebrate a veteran who is within our community doing great things when he was in the service and then now doing excellent things while he was out. And we're going to see some female veterans come up month to month, too, as we do that. We are getting ready to celebrate putting out the field of flags out at Garden of Memories. We got that out there real early, seeking volunteers to help us do that. Garden of Memories, as you know, is our largest cemetery with our war heroes in it. There's about 4,000 veterans out there and we're looking to take part in that. The Great American Trail, those veterans are coming again through utilizing our Great American Trail. And I'm working with Conservation and Waterloo in particular to make sure that when these six veterans come through this year, right around the third week of June, that we show them some Waterloo love like we did last year. Last year was five. This year, it's going to be, ended up being seven veterans that are going to ride from Washington DC to Washington State. And they're going to use the Great American Trail and they're going to come right through Waterloo. And we're looking to do some great things while they're here. They're going to make a pit stop here and we're working with Waterloo and the Conservation to make sure we do that. Real quick, I just wanted to show this slide here. This is Heidi, our Chair of the Commission of the Black Hawk County Veterans Affairs. She received, because last month, March, was Women's Appreciation Month. And in between Ms. Wright and Heidi Warrington, they were celebrated out at UNI in that standpoint. Here's a couple slides of our first chili that we did. We had a luncheon with chili. It was very successful. Couple other things, we made a donation to the Iowa Veterans Home out in Marshalltown. They're very appreciative. And so, I'm thankful for my staff. I'm thankful for every person that donated. We were able to give some donations. We got about 16 veterans from Black Hawk County that reside in the Iowa Veterans Home. Couple things that we did last month, big things. I'll share this slide with you, so I won't stay on a lot of these slides. But again, we did a Waterloo Veterans Resource Fair out at Upper Iowa last month and a few other things. Coming up this month, as you know, we're making preparations for Memorial Day Veterans Parade and we're having meetings as we prepare for that. Then, next week, we have our County Veteran Service Officers Training in Des Moines. It's a two-and-a-half-day training where a lot of all the service officers will be in Des Moines. And this is where we get our CEUs for staying eligible to help our veterans. Couple of things I kind of wanted to show you was some, just some totals, right? We're running into our fourth quarter and I just wanted to show some production of the first three quarters. And if you kind of look at these numbers, a couple of things that I wanted to point out was the new veterans. That's a veteran who has never come into our office. And so, the first quarter during the summer months, as you know, it's the warmest months. We get a lot more participation coming into our office. We had 100 veterans come in first quarter, new veterans, and then you could see the totals off to the side. And so, I just kind of want to share that production with you. In particular, you can see the meat of our production is our Vietnam veterans. They almost double what our post-9/11 and Gulf War veterans. But we're starting to see more of our Gulf War veterans because of the presumptive conditions that are now associated with the Gulf War, with the burn pits, the acknowledgement of the burn pits and the conditions that are affected by the burn pits. In particular, rhinitis, asthma, and sinusitis is one of the big ones. Also GERD, which is basically acid reflux in that standpoint, and some respiratory conditions that we're starting to see are post-9/11 and Gulf War veterans come in to seek their benefits. Couple of things I just want to share with you and I'll be out of your way is in February, these reports that we get from Des Moines are about two months out. And I guess it takes them about two months to collect that data. But in particular, I just wanted to show you that here in Black Hawk County, in compensation, we got about 1,500 veterans receiving compensation. And these are monthly totals that we get. Grand totals, we got about 1,800 veterans receiving, veterans and spouses, I always got to conclude that, or widows, receiving benefits through our county. And it brings in about $2.6 million monthly residual income that they could put back into our county. And I just kind of shared January's totals. We did lose some people, meaning that we lost some veterans. There is a lot of veterans that are starting to transition. And so, I'm just kind of showing you that difference of why the numbers are, because as a veteran dies, those benefits go back to the government, so say. And then, this is how we look compared to the top six counties in the state. We're right there at number five. I'm chasing to be number four. It's always set a goal. Will I get there? I don't know. But that's the goal of mine is to, with promotion, with outreach, with general customer service, there's a possibility that we could chase number four. And that's one of my goals. But the state is doing pretty well in the populated counties that have veterans. I'm just going to skip that one. Here's another one that I kind of wanted to touch base with. As we go into the fourth quarter, our general expenses for veterans, and that's what I'm just talking about, what you, the budget that you guys provide me to take care of veterans. We're about 42% of that budget. We haven't used a lot of it based off of federal grants, federal opportunities where people don't have to utilize our service and they can utilize the federal services. That's where I'm thinking that we didn't get a lot of draw with utilities this year. We didn't get a lot of draw with shelter. But as you can see, transportation, where we provide gas cars to our veterans, things of that nature, that was one of the biggest things up to this quarter. And you can see, we're already going to have to move some stuff around to help support that going into the fourth quarter. And we are seeing a lot more requests to go down to Iowa City for their medical appointments and they're coming saying, hey, I'm not getting the medical stipend or the gas stipend from the VA and I need assistance getting down there. So, we provide gas cards in that standpoint. The other one is funeral expenses. And that's where we provide the cremation at about $2,500 a pop, summer lower in that standpoint. And at the end of the year, I'll review those kind of totals again is where we're at in that standpoint. And then the last one, March donations. Again, this is how a lot of things are done within our office. We got about $300 in ramps and we'll start ramps up here at the end of April. We have two requests for widows that need ramps in that standpoint. And then, general total is $769 in donations just for the month of March. Other than that, I'm just standing by to address any questions. Again, I just want to come at least once a quarter to kind of tell you our production in that standpoint. And please forgive me for being so long. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none. Minutes approved for March 29th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is consent agenda by resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Belka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is proclamations. Resolution to proclaim the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
So moved.
Second.
We've got, you got that grant?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Would you like me to read it?
Please.
Whereas sexual assault affects women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, and whereas in addition to the immediate physical and emotional costs, sexual assault may also have associated consequences of post-traumatic stress disorder, substance abuse, depression, homelessness, eating disorders, and suicide. And whereas sexual assault can be devastating not only to the survivor, but also for the family, friends, and community of the survivor. And whereas since no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, we must work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent sexual assault, support survivors and their significant others, and support those agencies providing services to survivors. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Supervisors in and for Black Hawk County, on behalf of all staff and citizens of Black Hawk County, do hereby proclaim the month of March as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
The month of March?
What would you want it to be, April?
Thank you.
So, I suppose you'd probably want to get this reprinted to put April on it.
Thank you.
It's got March on it?
Yeah, it does.
Okay. Have a motion to that effect?
Oh, we did.
We have a motion.
Okay. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Belka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes, resolution adopted. Other business. This is a motion to direct the county auditor to adjutant for a public hearing to be held at 9:05 on Tuesday, April 19th, in Boardroom 201 of the Black Hawk County Courthouse. Proposed ordinance number of 77-263 from a request submitted by Mark Becker at 6925 Ansboro Avenue to rezone 1.5 acres from Ag. Agricultural District to AR Residential.
So moved.
Agricultural Residential.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is a motion to approve the personnel requisition submitted for an Assistant County Attorney, full-time replacement with a start date no sooner than May 31st, 2022, as recommended by Brian Williams, County Attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, a motion to approve the personnel requisition submitted for an Assistant County Attorney, part-time replacement with an immediate start date as recommended by Brian Williams, County Attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, a motion at the Personnel Requisition for a Court Debt Recover Officer, Full-Time Replacement with an Immediate Start Date in the County Attorney's Office to be approved as recommended by Brian Williams, County Attorney.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, the resolution at the 90-day embargo authorizing weight restrictions of vehicles to be operated in Black Hawk County as provided under 321-236, the Code of Iowa, effective April 5th, 2022, for 90 days on Waters Road from approximately 6,700 feet east of Platt Road to the west line of Hudson City Limits, approximately a quarter-mile east of Holmes Road with a limit of 10 tons be approved. And Director Chair to sign for same as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I would just add that this is the most frequent embargo that we have every year, and it is for 90 days on Waters Road.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. Any questions for Kathy? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a motion to authorize the Director Chair to sign for fiscal year 2023 Iowa Department of Transportation Secondary Road Budget and Five-Year Construction Plan as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Discussion. Do you want to do this right now, then?
Yeah, yes, if that suits you. Yeah.
Go for it.
So, as you know, every year, we are required by the Code of Iowa by April 15th to submit our fiscal year, the future fiscal year budget, and then our plan of road reconstruction, bridge reconstruction for the next five years. So, I generally spend five or 10 minutes going over that with you. I've provided you a copy of this PowerPoint presentation and have also handed you an 11-by-17 sheet that has the full five-year program on it. This will be available on our website as well for anyone who is interested in viewing that. Just as a reminder, these are our primary sources of revenue here in Black Hawk County for our roads and bridge system. We typically receive about $1.4 million a year that goes into our FM Fund, Foreign Market Fund, and that is to be spent on the FM market, foreign market system. We generally receive about $308,000 a year for our bridge program from the federal government, which has most recently been converted to swap dollars from the Iowa DOT. That is going away in 2024, and I'll speak a little bit more about that later on in my slides. And then, we also receive money through the RTA MPO, and that's typically averaged out to be $300,000, $400,000, $1,000 a year. And then, finally, our secondary road fund is our largest component, of course, for our funding. And that is $3.85 million comes from property taxes and about $5 million is coming from the road use tax fund. And then, of course, we get other miscellaneous money such as permit fees, selling scrap, reselling vehicles, trade-ins, what have you. And then, just like I said, new for FY '24 from the Iowa DOT, they are saying they will no longer be able to have enough money to give us swap dollars at the city and county level. So, those will be, we will see more federalized projects in the future. Looking at our total budget for the last three fiscal years, and I do apologize, this is, I did have to make an addition to this slide or change to this slide as to what is on your slides. The first, the estimated receipts in fiscal years '21, '22, and '23, Ryan pointed out to me that that did include our fund balances. So, the numbers I have up here on the screen are our actual receipts that we will be receiving for these years. So, in fiscal year '23, our actual receipts are estimated to be $11.239 million, and I will send you a correction with this. Your slide does show that we have a fund balance of almost $4.5 million, so that's why those receipts are larger. And then, you can see our total expenditures fiscal year '23, we are expecting to spend $12.9 million. And that does include the Grundy Road paving. That does include spending bond money. Just moving on, just a couple slides showing you the condition of our current system. I showed you the same slide last year. We only receive condition data from the Iowa DOT on a four-year basis, so we're working on ways to get more updated data. But in the meantime, this is our most current data on our road conditions. Our road conditions are in pretty good condition. You can see green is good, good condition. We do have the most number of miles in good condition, and this is based on ride quality. And ride quality is how the public perceives the condition of our roads. It's been researched that ride quality is the best way for the public to give us their input on the condition of our roads. So...
Can you say the most out of all the counties in Iowa?
Oh, no, this is strictly Black Hawk County roads. These are number of miles of roads. On the side, on the left-hand side, the slide goes up to 150 miles. We have 250 miles approximately of paved roads in Black Hawk County. So, the majority of our pavements are in, paved roads are in good condition at this time. This is looking at our bridge data, and I believe I shared some of this data with you back in early February. We have approximately 230, 228 bridges here in Black Hawk County. 134 of them are in good condition. And these numbers are based on our last inspection cycle. And then, you can see the weight restrictions over on the other doughnut graph. You can see that out of those bridges, we have just a very small number that are posted, 12 that are posted, two that are closed, and then one has a different type of restriction. Funding does, better roads means less, excuse me, better bridges, better bridge conditions means less funding based on federal formulas. So, while we do want to have, we do want to have good bridges, that does mean fewer federal dollars coming to us for our bridges. That's why our federal money coming to us for bridges has steadily been declining, and it's only about $308,000 projected to be for fiscal year '23.
So, the better you do, the less you receive, obviously, to improve, continue to improve.
Yes, and the money gets split out to all the counties in the same way. Those that have, it's based on deck area, condition of your deck, bridge deck area. Moving on, so this is taking a look at our bridges and our road projects that will be completed this summer, this coming summer. We are, just to go over those briefly, we are resurfacing Grundy Road, placing eight inches on top of that brand-new roadway that was graded last summer. We're placing three inches of rock and then eight inches of asphalt. As you know, that contract has already been let. It's been awarded to Aspro. I apologize, that is the wrong contract value there. That was, I will update that for you. It's approximately $4.2 million for the paving of Grundy Road. The next two projects were tied project with Aspro being the contractor. Those numbers are correct. I just checked those yesterday. We are resurfacing Canfield Road from Dubuque to Independence Road and then Eagle Road from Geiser Road over to 218. And those are the contract values. And then, we are also contributing about $50,000, $55,000 to Fayette County. We have a very short section of Black Hawk Buchanan Road that's in our county. Fayette County is partnering with us, Bremer County, Buchanan County, and Fayette County to do a very large cold-in-place recycle project on that road that goes up to Sumner, I believe. So, we have just a small portion of it, so we are only contributing the portion in our county. Looking ahead at this summer's bridge projects, the Cedar Wopsy, another bridge on Cedar Wopsy Road that will be replaced, this is east of Highway 63. Jim Schroeder is the contractor. That should be starting within the next few, two or three weeks. And that is the contract cost of $793,000. And then, we do have two small bridges that will be replaced by our bridge crew this summer, one on Washburn Road and Lincoln Road. They have already built those beams. They're sitting in our yard. And the reason for those replacements are due to poor timber pile. And then, I won't go through the next, I won't go through each project for the next four fiscal years. You can see that on your 11-by-17 sheet, but we have listed each year's road and each year's bridge projects for the next five years as required by our five-year plan. If you have any questions about that, please let me know in the future, or I'm happy to answer any questions about it right now. Mainly, we are replacing structures due to poor timber pile, poor deck condition. So, we always go by our most recent bridge inspection cycle to update this five-year plan.
I guess that was my only question, Kathy, as far as, it's not just that New Year's added and Old Year falls off. There's the reevaluation of some things that do change.
Right, exactly. Every year, we are sitting down, usually in the month of March, and looking at our program. Sometimes, funding changes. I just told you that we are being asked to eliminate the swap dollars now, and now those have to be converted to federal dollars. We have to take a look at which projects are FM, just the different types of funding that we are receiving. And we are, every year, we are looking at how we are planning and organizing and changing the five-year plan if that is necessary.
Kathy, the earlier slides showed the road use, the estimated amount for road use tax funds?
Yes.
What's that made of? I mean, is that your gas tax?
Yes, the secondary road fund, the $3.85 million, comes from the state of Iowa. That is, that would be taxes collected when we purchase gas at the gas pump, for example.
What would happen if they decide to go through the state of Iowa with taking that tax off to help out with the fuel cost? That certainly would affect us, wouldn't it?
Absolutely. The DOT has not given us any types of projections that I know of. They aren't forecasting any type of reduction in the gas tax due to the... due to those proposals. As far as I know, that discussion has primarily been at the federal level. I haven't kept up with that discussion if it's happened here at the state level. Right. And it also includes Time 21 money, and it also includes when you purchase a new vehicle and then your annual renewals for your licenses. All those go into the secondary road fund.
Thank you.
There's still some things this year's legislative group is looking at that could change or impact your budgets in the future, too. Right, and that brings us to my next slide. That would be the local option sales tax. I will come back to that. But this is, this last slide shows what we are submitting to the DOT. It does show our budget for the next five years, each fiscal year. It does show the types of fundings we are anticipating to be receiving in each category of swap, farm-to-market funds, local funds, which come from the local property taxes, and then federal aid. And as I've said, swap will be dropping off in FY23. Those, we're just doing one or two more projects with swap, and then we'll be converting that federal bridge money back to federal aid projects. What that means is that some of our projects, we have the possibility that some of them would be, have federally prevailing wages on them. We would have to, in some cases, have DBE contractors. Not all projects, federal projects have these requirements. The DOT takes a look at the type of project that it is, and they determine if you need to have these DB subcontractors and use prevailing wages, et cetera. We would have to comply with Buy American Steel requirements, but we believe most contractors are doing that anyway. So there will be some, a few minor changes that take place when we go back to the federal funds. And this is again because of an anticipated increase of federal dollars to the state of Iowa, the Iowa DOT, and them not having enough state money to, quote-unquote, swap those dollars for federal dollars to local agencies. Okay, moving on to just a few other items I want to discuss with you, and that would be the local option sales tax. And as you know, since 2008, 50% of the local option sales tax has been going to roads and bridges here in Blackhawk County, and 50% goes to tax relief. That equates to about $1.3 million a year for roads and bridges. I believe that the public did vote to support us agencies maintaining our roads and bridges, so they did vote for the local option sales tax.
It was a very, very low turnout.
Yes, and we, I would like to work with the cities, the larger cities, all the cities in this county, to promote that will come up for vote next year in 2023. I would like to work with them to keep people informed of what the money does for them. It is being used to bond for projects because James has told us all repeatedly in recent weeks since our, the budget meetings, that the levy service, the debt service will taper off in the next few years. I would like to work with you all to come up with another bond program that we could start in FY24 to use those dollars that are accumulating in the local option sales tax that would be used to repay those debts from the local option sales tax. I believe people supported in the past. I'm hopeful that they will do so again, and we will have a program to move forward to keep our roads and bridges in good condition. Can I answer any questions on that? And you mentioned working with Waterloo and Cedar Falls to get the word out. Have you had any particular discussions or thoughts on how you'd do that? I have not as of yet. I have talked to the city engineer, and we've talked very briefly about working together to promote more awareness of the local option sales tax and what we do with the money for the roads and bridges. My last slide is just to talk a minute or two about strategic planning for Blackhawk County, our secondary roads department. And as I've said, we are seeing increasing, I've been telling you this for the past six months, we are seeing increasing costs in everything, from purchasing new equipment to our road and bridge projects being, becoming more expensive. I don't know if these costs will go back down. I, we are anticipating they probably won't go back down to where they were before COVID levels or before they, where they were two or three years ago. We're seeing, we are seeing decreases in funding, particularly if we don't, if we're not able to use the local option sales tax for bonding projects. So I would like to have discussions with the public yourselves in the future, perhaps surveys, is our system sustainable? Primarily, road, the road and bridge system. Here in Blackhawk County, we are fortunately fortunate. We do have a growing population. Most of our county roads, the gravel roads, the paved roads, most of them do have a home on every single mile. We do have a few miles of gravel where there is not a home, but it's probably less than 10 miles. So the option of us closing many miles of roads is probably not going to be very attractive for all the people that live out in the county. But bridges may become a necessity that we start taking a harder look at not replacing some bridges, just due to the high cost of the bridge replacements that we have been seeing over the past year or two. As you know, we have two bridges closed right now. The Bennington Road Bridge that I am anticipating, we cannot afford to replace that. We have budgeted to remove it. The Wheeler Road Bridge is closed right now. You've heard from those people. They, of course, we all want our local bridge to be replaced. We are probably not going to be able to maintain replacing every bridge that comes up for, that needs to be replaced. We may have to close bridges, and I just want to start a conversation with you all, with the public, on how we go forward with doing that in the future. I think a plan or some type of methodology would be very helpful to all of us involved and maybe make it less contentious as we go forward with funding roads and bridges in the future.
The Bennington Road Bridge really wasn't, the major concern was the lack of usage. It wasn't really necessarily the cost. I'm sure it would have cost us, but it was more the usage. It was down to almost nothing, and it didn't justify replacing it.
So it probably had 20 to 30 cars a day, Ryan? Yeah, so 40 to 5, 40 to 45 vehicles a day. Of course, if you talk to the homeowners right in the vicinity of the bridge, they will tell you that agricultural, a small number of agricultural, just due to the truss configuration of the bridge.
But isn't there a sister bridge fairly close to the Bennington Road Bridge?
That, not exactly. The Wheeler Road Bridge that's closed does have a parallel route, a mile, a brand-new, well, a very recently constructed bridge, a mile. The Bennington is, because it crosses over the Wapsapinican River. It was a larger structure. We're anticipating it would cost well over $1 million to replace that. And exactly, you're right, Tom, just due to the lower volumes of traffic.
I'm really surprised to hear those numbers. I didn't think they would be close to that.
And we estimated a cost for Wheeler, too, didn't we? Replacement? One point, one to 1.2 or 3 million?
Yeah.
At least $1 million, based on today's current costs.
Yeah, that's what, 30, 40% higher due to the material and stuff?
Yeah. So we will be, we'll probably be having some of these discussions at the meeting on May 5th in Dunkerton, and I'll be sending out public notices to try and get public involvement to start some of those discussions on that bridge and potentially other bridges. I would maybe, I would like to go to some of the townships this coming year to begin discussions about the future of the road, bridge and road system in Blackhawk. And I'll be sharing some of that, I'll be sharing that with you in the future. I would assume some of those 21 bridges that are on our deficient side are part of the list, would be some of those that we'd look at or not? I mean, we'd look at all of them, but I mean, are those? Right, so I believe 14 of those 21 are in our five-year plan for replacement. So we've deemed them, we would like to replace those bridges. A few of them are on the paved road system. Some of our, the smaller bridges on our gravel road system, those are fairly inexpensive for us to replace. If we can replace them with our county bridge crew, those costs are slightly over $100,000. Those are pretty cost-effective for us to replace. It's the bridges like Wheeler Road Bridge that are over Crane Creek, that are, that are long, that are on gravel roads, that would cost over $1 million to replace. Those are some of the bridges that we are having a harder time finding the money for and question what should be the future of these structures.
We replaced a lot of our major bridges, expensive bridges.
Absolutely. You know, as you know, the last river bridge to be replaced, the Cedar River Bridge, was, we got a good price on that. The next major Cedar River Bridge crossing would be at Gilbertville, and that we're anticipating, just due to its, how wide it is, we anticipate we would, of course, need to replace the bike trail. It would be a wide bridge. That's our longest stretch.
That's not that old of a bridge, is it? I remember, for me, coming on the board, was in the process of building that.
It was rehabilitated at the time the substructure was built.
Because they shut it down when they were going, I remember when that was going on. You, Craig, I think you were on the board then. How many miles a year roughly do we resurface?
So, I've told you in the past that we need to be resurfacing approximately eight to 10 miles. We've, that's, that's dropped. About five or six years ago, when we had this very strong bond program, once, when it started, immediately after it started, we were, we were resurfacing about 10 to 12 miles a year. That's dropped considerably. Now we're only resurfacing maybe four to six. It's, it's just getting very expensive to resurface it.
I think when I came on the board, because I remember the engineer at that time did a presentation, and I think it was only like three miles. It was all the funding he was receiving at the time for resurfacing.
Yeah, and I've talked to you about preventative maintenance treatments. We will, we are going to be looking more at using those types of processes to extend the lives of our pavements. Can I answer any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. I would ask that you approve the five-year plan.
A motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, the resolution that the funding request between the Blackhawk County Metropolitan Area Transportation Policy Board and Blackhawk County for the fiscal year 2026, Donald Street Resurfacing Project be approved, and Director Chair is assigned for same.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
So this is, as I just, this is in the 2026 year, and the RTA does require approval by you so that you are aware that this project will be federalized, and you are aware that we are, we will be complying with those federal requirements to receive that money.
Any further questions? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution that the applications for property tax exemption under the authority of the Iowa Property Tax Natural Resources Exemption and Assessment Law, including open prairie and wildlife habitat pursuant to 427.1, the Code of Iowa, be approved, and Director Chair is assigned for same, as recommended by TJ Coinesville. Moved in seconding. Any discussion? I don't see TJ in here. This resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is any reports or information from the board.
I saw a slide of Willie Mae Wright.
Yep.
I think she just celebrated her 90th birthday.
Nope, it's Saturday.
Saturday, okay.
She's going to be sitting on the curb, welcoming people for about two hours, I think it is, on Saturday, if it's not raining.
Well, happy birthday.
No kidding. Good lady.
Yeah.
Hearing none. We're going to be moving into closed session. The crowd will get some. Anything else to come before us? None, I intend, motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
Moved in second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
You are adjourned.
All right.